All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the Cartwright Elementary School District's Study Session followed by regular governing board meeting with executive session for November 17th, 2022. Let the record reflect, it is 5 o'clock PM and this meeting has been called to order. Thank you for being here this evening, everyone. Gracias por estar aquí. Right, our first order of business is the call to order. We do have present in the governing boardroom, myself, Marissa Hernandez, Board President. We also have Pedro Lopez, Vice President of the Board, present in the boardroom, and we have governing board member Anna Lletabatia participating telephonically this evening. So we do have a quorum. Our next item is one of our favorite displays during this meeting and each meeting. It is our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be presented this evening by video from our Frank Forman scholars. Once the video is up, if everyone could please rise and join us along with the Frank Forman scholars in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Thank you to our Frank Forman scholars for sending us that video. Always delighted to see their little faces. Item three is our land acknowledgement. The Cartwright School District is located on the ancestral homeland of the Huacamal O'Orum and O'Orum Jew people, ancestors of the Salt River people of America.
I pledge allegiance to the
Hey guys. For SRM-PIC, we acknowledge the rich oral history, culture of these communities and their ancestral ties to the land since time immemorial, the history and presence of colonization that has shaped our relations, and the healing work we must embark on to realign our paths. In the words of Sheri Mitchell, "Ona hamu kosep" of the Penawapskik, oneness is not sameness. It is the transcendence of our differences and the weaving of our diverse expressions into a tapestry that is harmonized and aligned with a common purpose. We are dedicated to this goal by naming the original people of this land, learning the history of our relations in our classrooms, and decolonizing our practices in service of shared liberation for all groups impacted by these systemic relations. Thank you. Item number four is our adoption of agenda. So I'd like to make a motion for approval of the next agenda as presented at the Cartwright Elementary School District Governing Board Study Session followed by regular governing board meeting with executive session for November 17th, 2022. Do I have a second? And for the record, let the record reflect, the governing board member, Ms. Lydia Hernandez, has now joined the meeting. We are on a motion and looking for a second on the board adoption.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. So we do have a motion made by myself, Marissa Hernandez, and a second by Vice President Pedro Lopez. Any discussion? Awesome. We will do a roll call vote. Governing board member Anna Lletabatia, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, Ms. Lletabatia. Governing board Vice President, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Governing board member Lydia Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. I vote aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. At this time, we will move on to our study session. Item one is presented by Dr. Aguilar Lawler. It is our presentation, discussion, and information regarding Southwest Food Service Excellence, otherwise known as SFE.
Thank you, Board President, members of the governing board, executive team, audience, principals, and those in the audience. I would like to start by introducing, first of all, thanking everyone for being here, and introducing our Director of Public Relations, Victor Hugo Rodriguez, who is going to facilitate our study session this evening.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Aguilar Lawler, governing board members, executive team, and those in the audience, thank you so much for being here today. I'm going to be presenting a detailed timeline of those who requested change for food services, those who were involved from the beginning. There were many concerns that were brought up to the table, questioning the quality of food that we were serving to our students. This was a team effort from the local association governing board, members, administrative team, and our stakeholders. They presented a problem, and everybody in the community decided to move forward with a solution.
Let the record reflect, the governing board member Denise Garcia has arrived at the meeting and it is exactly 5:06 PM. Thank you.
I want you to pay close attention to those pictures that you are going to see on this slideshow. There was a lot of pressure from the beginning to improve the quality of food during, the quality of food that we were providing to our students. As you can see, some of the complaints were coming because we weren't providing food in plastic wraps, and those were some of the pictures that were sent to us from some of the people that I'm going to mention in this presentation. I just want to say that during this investigation, we reviewed text messages, videos, photos complaining about food in our schools, and we also reviewed several videos from some of these meetings, from the governing board meetings, even when Dr. Lawler was the superintendent and the director of food services tried to address this issue, however, there were really no improvements during this process. But to find a solution to the problem, the district decided to serve its parents. The survey showed unsatisfactory results. Parents were not happy with the food that we were giving to our students. During Dr. Lawler's listening tours, parents had the opportunity to express how they really feel about the school meals and requested changes. This was just the beginning of a campaign to improve the quality of food. Dr. Lawler was receiving pictures and videos about the food being served to our students. This was just an ongoing situation coming from stakeholders and the local association members. There were also several complaints from teachers, staff, and again, from local association members about the quality of food that were given to our students. This was just the beginning. This is just one of the videos expressing concern about the food quality. I would like to see if I can play this again. These are the kind of videos that staff was receiving. They were getting videos, they were getting pictures complaining about the quality of food that was provided to the students. During the listening tours with all the stakeholders back in 2019, one thing they were hearing over and over was to improve the quality of food for our students. The administrative team tried to improve food quality with existing internal management, but prior food service management was not able to make the change. These were some of the requests. They asked to increase portions for students. They requested organic produce. They also requested to improve the quality of food, but all of these requests were denied. Prior food service director was opposed to any changes. She actually left employment and announced a new contract. Her goal was not to improve the quality of food, her goal was solely on saving money. But the pressure to improve the quality of food continued. There were so many concerns that were raised by principal teachers, the local association members, who voiced concerns and sent several pictures. Teachers and other staff members also continued to send photos. At this point, the administrative team reviewed options for improving quality of food. And during this process, we reviewed what other districts were doing. I want to say that according to the average on the Department of Education, there are about 53 schools that are using third-party companies. And these are some of them. Dyson Unified School District, Fontaine Hills, Baltz, Little Town, Chandler, Flagstaff, Endergast, Bacai, Thompson, Murphy, Kigreen, Liberty, Woodson. And it is important to mention that some of the school districts are also using, that are using third-party companies to provide food. They also have active association members from AEA, AFP. That's why we never thought it was an issue to move forward with SFE. I'm going to say that there was really not too strong opposition during these meetings because everybody was involved trying to improve the quality of food. Governing board, stakeholders, and CEA members were also part of this. And I would like to ask Dr. Lawler to really speak about ESP in forums, in collaboration with CEA, and if you can explain what really happened during this meeting, Dr. Aguilar.
Thank you, Victor. First of all, I would like to say that, just kind of reiterate our quest and for all the food service workers out there, the whole purpose was not to cause harm, the whole purpose was to just get better food for our kids and for support for you as well. At that meeting, I believe that, well, there were several meetings, but the one that I was at, I remember the question was asked, and it was a good question from CEA, and that was, "Why can't our own food service company, you know, make better food?" And I said, "If you," I've been trying for the last few years, "but if you can make it happen within our own food service, we will definitely not move forward with anything else." At that time, knowing, we all know the same thing, CEA, nobody is trying to do anything wrong, we decided that it wasn't going to be able to happen in-house, and so we went on our quest. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lawler. And as you just heard, it is very obvious that we would have not, we would have not been able to move forward with RFP if any opposition from the local association would have been presented. There was really no opposition and nobody thought that this was going to happen. The only intent to be able to move forward was to improve the quality of the food, and it was really never intended to cause any hardship to any of the employees, especially the cafeteria workers, people that we really value and are really essential for our students. So there was really never an intent to privatize food services. Had the board known, we wouldn't have really been here now. These are some of the people that really participated during this transition. The administrative team created a committee. They had principals, CEA representatives were part of this, teachers, cafeteria staff, and district staff. On May 12th, 2022, the administrative team recommended the governing board award the RFP to Southwest Food Service Excellence, SFE. There was a few days later, there was a bilingual transition meeting with food services staff. This was a bilingual transition, Spanish and English. There were several meetings in various locations. They discussed benefits, retirement, bonuses, and they even explained the transition into SFE and the choice of whether staying with Cartwright and moving forward with the other company. Again, there were no concerns, there was no opposition from the local association. Nobody really thought this was going to happen. Nobody really opposed, nobody really said anything, and that's why we decided to move forward. However, two or three weeks into the school, there were concerns from the local association members and our governing board members. They started visiting our employees. We welcomed the visit because all of us here support the local association. Even at one point, Dr. Lawler was a member of a local association, and I want to say that most of the people here have been members of local associations. I was part of the union, so we always supported and we appreciate everything that they do for the employees. That's why we allow anybody to really go out and talk to them. We addressed a lot of those issues. Every time they would break a problem, we were able to come up with a solution. However, I'm going to take you back to really what brought us here right now. On your left, you're going to see some of the pictures that they sent to us. You could see the, you know, some of the plastic. Parents were complaining that it was frozen in the middle, that it was cold, that the food was coming in plastic and that the students were not eating that. They were just grabbing it and tossing it away. We made changes. You know, as you can see, in the first, we have three choices of food now. The one in the bag, it was actually prepared, and now, I know it takes a lot more effort for our employees to be able to prepare the food versus, you know, the other way, that it was a little more convenient, however, the students were not eating it. So there was an issue that was addressed, and we tried to come up with a solution with students in mind. It was really, again, it was really never intended to cause any harm or any disruption on our cafeteria workers. These were some of the feedback that we were getting. I had the opportunity to go around and talk to some of the parents and even talk to some of the students. They weren't very happy with the food that they were getting. They kept saying that it was great, they kept saying that they were eating the food now, so this celebration really somehow turned into a nightmare. And it was really, again, it was really never intended for this to happen. It was really, we never thought, you know, that we would actually be here, when the sole purpose of this was to improve the quality of food for our children. And at this moment, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the representative for food services, Alma Silva, if you can please, join us. Alma Silva is a representative from food services.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alma Silva, and I am Cartwright Cafeteria Board of 18 Years. I'm asking the school board to put a stop to the company that wants to privatize our cafeterias and have us work with enough benefits. We moved to SFEI without enough staffing, without enough equipment. This has lead to inquiries from trying to do more with less. We want to remain Cartwright employees. Give us your community the hours to the board, help us feed our families. We are the Cartwright community mothers, aunts, and daughters. I ask that the contract be terminated with SFE and for Cartwright School District to work with our CEA cafeterias, SFI. We keep our cafeterias doors open during the pandemic, serving our families. We come every day because all the students depend on us for sometimes the only meal they will get. We stand by our community. Will you stand with us? I speak Spanish, okay? Todo esto de la nueva compañía, la gente ha sido agradable, nice, y ha sido colaborado. Lo que a nosotros nos trae aquí es la intención por la cual se introdujo la nueva compañía, en la cual muchas cosas no estamos de acuerdo. Creo haber entendido un poco de lo que dijo el primer señor, y muchas cosas no se nos comunicaron y se nos habló en claro. Vamos a poner un punto a favor. La gente de SFI, Brian, Isbeth, Jessica, a mí en lo personal me han dado muy buen trato. No son asuntos personales ni con alía. Es la situación por la cual se trajo a la nueva compañía con la que no estamos de acuerdo, no solo yo, muchas de mis compañeras que están de aquí apoyando. Gracias.
Realmente quiero decirte que agradecemos muchísimo el trabajo que haces de parte de todos los que estamos aquí. Agradecemos su trabajo y créeme que estamos todos trabajando para hacer cambios, para que puedan favorecer a todos ustedes y para que de esta forma todos podamos caminar en la misma dirección. Ninguno de nosotros aquí estamos de acuerdo con la privatización y estamos de acuerdo con ustedes y estamos dispuestos de pronto a hacer cambios y es la razón por la que estamos aquí. Thank you, thank you so much. And again, I just wanted to say thank you to Alma Silva. We really appreciate her hard work. We really appreciate what every single cafeteria worker and every single employee at the district is doing. And again, I just wanted to make it clear that we don't agree and we, you know, we don't agree with our privateization and that we need to move in the same direction and we need to make any changes. I appreciate this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor, and all, thank you. Now, with that, are there any questions from the governing board? Ms. Garcia?
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Aguilar Lawler, executive team, all those in attendance. I have to admit, this has been a very disheartening. We've gone above and beyond to be transparent. All the stakeholders have been involved with the decision-making, and now we are moving in a different direction because we will continue to support our entire Cartwright family. Thank you.
Ms. Hernandez?
Thank you, Madam President, fellow board members. Thank you, Madam President, fellow board members, executive team, those in the audience and those watching. I'm thinking about, thank you. I'm thinking about, you know, the questions. When asked, do we have any questions? We have spent, I'm going to say maybe over the last six months, possibly more, from the onset of the decision that was made, in conversation. I had questions about this issue. I asked my questions. The board directed me to please contact the administration because I, for those that know me, I've been on the board for 17 years, and I tend to be very vocal, regardless of what needs to be shared, always advocating for our community members. Because I'm a family member, because I'm a parent, and because that's why I chose to run for the school board. Bilingual, I mean, so many propositions throughout the years, too many to name. But I did ask my questions specifically around, you know, what were they offering? What kind of benefits? What kind of, you know, hours? Because I've always, and I think, I welcome everyone, especially AEA, to go back and look at our recorded meetings, even for the past year, just to give you a glimpse of the types of discussions that we've had, the types of questions that individual board members made, the type of involvement that we've had with our board. Our board is made up of volunteers. We're parents, we're, we come from our own community. But I say this because when I ask the questions, I think I called a few individual staff members, a couple of them in HR, and they answered my questions specifically because I had members of my community that work in the cafeterias asking questions, and I wanted to make sure that I have the correct information. So when I asked about the benefits, it was still sketchy at the time. So a decision had not been made, a discussion was going to be coming before the board. When the discussion came, there were no questions, either from other board members. And when I ask, and I invite you to go back and see our meetings, we tend to be a board that doesn't engage in a lot of discussion. That's something that I've always advocated, you know, pressed, I pushed to the point where, you know, I've been a minority member on this board. And I disclose this in my history of involvement because I, this is who I am, I'm always asking for transparency and honesty. The board knows me, my executive team here, the administration knows me, to abstain and not vote, and question contracts, everything. And I have a history as well. I do my due diligence. I never make a decision. On this occasion, when it came before the board, there were no questions. However, I knew that I had gotten the answers back to my community members. I've seen, then, over the last few days, have been engaged with several that called me pertaining to elections, and they said, when we talked about the issue, because I said it was being discussed and what was happening, there were several of those members, my community members, my neighbors, that said they had gone to a meeting and that they were disappointed with a discussion that was had. Because although it was in a good spirit, they thought to help them, advocate for themselves, to ask for, you know, to ask for this contract to be canceled, to provide, you know, something better for them. But it was because they have no experience with unions or how they work, they don't know that it's a dues-paying membership. So that wasn't something that was shared upfront, so several did not sign up. And I'd be glad to share, and I would hope, and I called before I came to this meeting, invited those same folks to come and speak, that did not become members because they couldn't afford it. They couldn't afford it because of our, you know, the limited hours that we have now. I will also go on the record, and I invite you to go back, I've always advocated, and I think I see my union members here, that have been very upfront about asking, always, when it comes to our budget, for more hours, always stepping up or classifying, always. When, the only time that we've had issues with CEA, that we've engaged in discussions, that things were happening, has been in conversations. Our school board member has chosen to have a formal discussion. So we have an organized effort for those conversations to take place, at which not all of our board members are present. So those are called meeting conference. So we select members of our staff to go and engage in those conversations, going along the lines with our philosophy and where the board, you know, the board stands behind. The only time that we have those issues is when it comes to budget crunches. When I first got elected, I'm going to sit back in 2004, around, and I'm creating a timeline here. In 2006, I was invited to an individual meeting with our current president here of CEA, and I had a lot of questions because, you know, what was it? What was it that we weren't agreeing on? Where's the beef? Where's the argument? Because I still, for the life of me, am not able to understand that relationship. Because I see another school district, and I've brought this before the board, maybe three or four occasions, where I've opted, you know, when people don't feel included or don't feel listened to, that we dismantle this, you know, to create something that's productive. How are we going to engage in those formal conversations so that we agree, we work together to find a solution? I hate to say that it's following our dead years because nobody, people just look at me, and I'm thinking, well, you know, what is the solution? I guess here I go again, every year. And all I say is, you know, I'll reiterate, I'll reiterate, regardless of who's at the helm of the leadership, because I don't care who's at the helm, we'll always have an issue. We continue to see, I see that pattern. Unfortunately, I've been here long enough to see the trend in that pattern. So coming back to this issue, I was asked by the CEA volunteer, because I don't think you were president yet, but you were a volunteer, and we met to discuss, you know, what those issues, you know, might be, because I was a new board member, I think I'd been on, you know, working on my role for two years. And she brought to my attention, you know, the budgets. You know, we're taught, and I want to share, that school board budgets are made up of restricted and non-restricted funding. That means that we can't, I can't go and say, you know, you know what, living That means that we can't, I can't go and say, you know, you know, I'm living have access to a certain type of, I call them buckets, because it's restricted. They're intended for use for a certain purpose, a reason. But that conversation, I was invited to go to my local state AEA location so we could have a study session on what those budget, you know, resources are, how we can access them, how we can tap into them so that if we want to perhaps increase, you know, teacher salaries, you know, how it works, how that framework works. Now, I'm gonna tell you up to now, I am probably one of the only board members that have attended over 400-plus hours of credit additional hours, above and beyond, so that I could continue doing my due diligence so that I could make the best informed decisions. There are no questions, I think, as hairy as it might be, as uncomfortable as it might make someone. Always ask my questions. Doesn't make it, you know, doesn't make me, I'm always a misbehaved child, right? But at that one time, I go, I listen, I come back. And I say, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna ask our administration to present the budget, to show everybody how it is that we break it down, what we have access to and what we don't. Over the course of my tenure here, we went specifically dealing with this issue, food service workers at cafeteria, food services. In fact, I think it was I that brought this back from one of my national conferences that I've attended. I always came back with menus. How is it? And I joked about it. Lobster. Can't we have lobster for our kids to experience? You know, nobody can tell me I didn't say that. All kinds of recommendations and how do we go at it, how do we go about it? Then we came to the decision that we developed this department. We've done many things with this department, including going in-house and generating income in unrestricted account. What does unrestricted mean? That we can have access so that we might pay something out of it. However, our administration at the time believed was more conservative, as I am, in spending money that's not mine, that belongs to our constituents. And we decided to keep it in-house. Times have changed. Pandemic came about. We didn't have as many physical bodies in our school district. There were, you know, ailments, issues, all kinds of issues that we were dealing with. I've always been against, you know, continued spending, especially during these times. And I questioned how we were moving forward, how we were looking, how we were going about our spending. Because I questioned, ignorantly questioned, you know, the contracts, building. Why are we building? Kids aren't here. And yet now we're outsourcing. I've never been an advocate of outsourcing. I've been a leader with the Industrial Area Foundation, Valley Interface Project, and those that are familiar with that. And I'm sure that AEA and Mr. Randy Baudis is very much aware that we engage in local actions, developing public actions, so that we make changes, we influence for the good, the betterment of our community. So that is still true today. So when I come back to the issue where I questioned the benefits, I didn't have the answers, I look towards my colleagues and once again, everybody had asked their questions. No community member, nobody, aside from my own calls that I'd gotten at a personal level that I responded to. So I was able, I think we moved forward and we voted on that. Coming, now coming back, it's challenging for us to, having made a decision and gotten into a contract that is perhaps, you know, a million dollars, whatever the dollar might look like, that figure, and cancel it mid-contract. That would mean that we spent that money, just keep it because I'm gonna go ahead and do the right thing and do something else and we're out money. So now I've gotta, I've gotta come up, I've gotta look at the budget to see where I'm gonna get the additional monies, not only to pay this current contract off, but also, you know, we're looking to do it in-house or are there options that we don't have the answers to? And if we do have the answers and that there's been community meetings or, you know, heavy due diligence discussions, I wanna know. I wanna know what those answers are so that we work together at coming out with a solution. As a volunteer and as a mother in this district and having my neighbors come to me and providing them with the answers that they were looking for, I find it. Nobody, I never got a call, never got a call from AEA, from anybody around this issue. So they could tell me what those issues are so that I could internally or publicly address him during the question and answer session before we engage or embark on a contract. And this reminds me, going back, as I mentioned, that the current CEA president, who was one of our teachers at the time, and volunteer that invited me to that training down at their headquarters, when I asked, you know, what is it? What are the overriding issues that we have that we, as a board member, can address publicly and address with our administration? Be it with policy, be it, you know, maybe through statute, whatever it needs, what are the issues so I can better understand them? So that we know, so that I understand where we're stepping on each other's toes? I got no response. I said, is there something in writing, some issues? And she was not able to provide any at the time. For years, I continued to ask the same issue. And I'm gonna say, who was Mr., it was a county superintendent of public instruction before dialing, after dialing or before dialing?
Don Kobe.
Mr. Don Kobe. I went to a training with him, sat down with him and I said, sir, because they were talking about budget items, you know, being pressured by groups and interest groups. And I said, you know, to this day, I still don't get. I've been asking for what the overriding issues are that you stand for, that the organization stands for, so that we can work at it together. Because I've only heard budget and it's always at public times and it's always when either we're about or we're going or we're asking monies from the state. I always told our administrators, you're in a very difficult seat because, and I'm gonna say, I've never been, I can't say I've never, received the support of AEA or unions. I've walked my own signatures, folks with my neighbors to run for office. And this includes my board seat. So I'm very vested in my community. And so when we come back to the issue about providing the, what it is, nobody's been able to provide it. Mr. Kobe says, and that's the question, you know, of the day. It's budget. So when there's been times here, especially recently, and we talked about the budget and the breakup of that budget publicly, we asked our questions, I asked a question. Where does the CEA stand on this and have you engaged? Because other than what we've heard, and I'm not saying the administration has always been upfront. Unfortunately, we haven't always liked what our messenger, what our staff is responding or how they're responding. I don't know how you can make nice and appropriate and friendly and caring when we don't have the budget to be able to provide more than what we are currently offering. And I'm gonna say because we always offer whatever we can. We look for those, where we can make those cuts, we always respond. I always refer back, and I think Christine, you might know, put you on the spot, but there's always the breakdown of the budget. And it's a document that comes from the state, right? From the Department of, there's a report that breaks down how we're spending our budget. Office of Budget and the Auditor Generals of Audit, Findings and Reports. I always ask to please share, on the former and the right-hand side, we include, how much money, I'm sorry, I'm painting a picture, but it's nothing here. But it's, when we shared it up here, we illustrate the funding that we've given when we could and every year we could. I'm gonna tell you where we couldn't because I've been here this long, 2006. And so I think we even created, we built the freeze, we started addressing HR, employee schedule pay. That's when we fully aggressive addressed it. So it's been a very historical, all I can say is that to this day, I always welcome conversation about how it is, especially when it comes to recommendations. We can't think it, you know, we can't think it all through. But I look towards those resources. So I invite anybody to please fill me in on, you know, what's the best solution to do this and handle this right now so that we don't hurt the budget of the district and continue to, you know, to not have the most favorable contract, I think, you know, with our workers. Should I, I'm gonna back up and say this, what, maybe a couple of months ago I asked, is this already done deal, is it decided? Is there input? Is it not too late? Because I thought, I welcomed CEA to tell me, you know, at this point, because CEA did advocate the fact that we were not addressing in our classifieds fully, I asked if we could put a stop to it, if it's not too late. I know we had people confer and I was, I think, both fronts, not only the administration. I was confronted with by the administration and CEA saying that it had been discussed, thoroughly discussed. So there was no budget. So I welcome any of my board members to chime in and in terms of to the questions that were asked because I want the public, the public needs to know that we don't just come and sit here and say, you know what, oh, they're voting this way, they want it this way, we'll do it. No, it's not about that. I can tell you that firsthand. And I would invite you, I could sit down and probably, I have a book, by the way, a manual that can tell you what meeting happened and what, historically, maybe for the last three years. And I invite you, you can see it, it's in my car, in fact, I travel with it in my truck. Because if I can use it at work, I will do it. But I think it just, and I ask with all due respect, what is the solution that we have here? Because I don't want, I certainly don't want to engage and go further. If we need to dissolve that contract, we'll do it. But that must gotta come from somewhere. And I'm from you. Because nobody's engaging in a conversation, I don't know, any more than what I've already, you know, the decision that I've made. And I've attended, like I said, over 400 hours. So I've been before the experts at the school board, county level, the state and the national engage me. But if you're not going to engage me, I question why. And furthermore, just most recently, I solved this, by the way. AEA is no friend of mine. I was not endorsed for anything. I've never been endorsed. But however, to set the record straight, I've always walked my community on my own. Nobody does it for me. And so I don't owe anything to anybody. That's why I tell everybody, and incoming new members, anywhere, be it the board, school board, state, any office that you run for, the minute that you take outside monies or support, you're gonna be asked for favors. I'm objective and I can tell you to this day, I'm objective. So I'm willing to listen to anybody so that we move forward and proactively, proactively. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. The reason, fellow governing board members, Dr. Aguilar Lawler, executive team, everyone in attendance this evening, thank you for being here. Well, first to clarify, the request to cancel the contract would be at the end of the school year, which is June 30th, 2022, just to clarify that for everyone. The other thing is, the reason that the board didn't ask a lot of questions at the time is because we put our trust in the committee and the committee was created with the intention of including as many stakeholders and our Cartwright Education Association to be a part of the process. And so we trusted the decision that was made and that all stakeholders had time to ask questions and we wanted to provide better foods for our children. To clarify a little more on what Ms. Hernandez said, nobody owns anyone on this board. We make our decisions based on the information that's provided. If anybody owns us, it's the scholars and our parents, our community, the people that truly matter. Make the decisions, okay. You can make your reactions all you want, it's fine. It doesn't bother me at all. But when you say, you know, you walk and you do all your things, I'm really proud of you for doing that and most of us do that as well. But just to clarify for that, we make our decisions based on the information that's presented and at times, we put our faith in our committees. Can every committee or every board member know exactly what's gonna happen in life when we make these decisions? No. There's always gonna be issues. We're obviously here today so that we can listen and finally yet clearly relate to us what the issue truly is. Because at this point, that must have been really very clearly. Mr. Lopez has some things to say. Have you got questions? Oh, okay. Ms. Abethia, do you have any questions?
No, I do not. It's a little hard to hear.
Sorry, Ms. Abethia.
The presentation. So I'll kind of hold on and just listen to it for right now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Abethia. Mr. Lopez would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Aguilar Lawler, fellow board member, executive team, those in the audience. Thank you again. Thank you, board member Lady Hernandez. And again, thank you to our cafeteria workers who are here today. Again, at a board meeting, we always appreciate you coming and speaking, your concerns and taking the time from your family to be here. I think two, two or three, four minutes ago, we heard the issues brought to us here at a board meeting, the concerns by cafeteria workers and many other worker categories, I would say, throughout the school. And so I think we know what the issue is. Obviously, switching to a new vendor and the production of food now at the cafeteria from scratch has created a stress on the cafeteria workers to obviously complete the task within the time since in the past we were warming up food for the most part. So, you know, we've heard the issues in the last board meeting, and I think you were here as well, board member Lady Hernandez. And so the administration has been working, they've had some community meetings here with the workers and the superintendents. So there's ongoing solutions to the issue, to the problem. I know the workers have asked for the SFP contract to be terminated. And so I guess a quick question from my end to Mr. Strattman is, given that we do have a contract with them, is there a fine or a cost, I know we've talked about a cost, if we were to terminate that contract today, effective immediately? Or, Ms. Farrar, is there a cost that we have to pay?
Good evening, Board President, members of the governing board, Dr. Aguilar Lawler, members of the executive team and everyone in audience, in person and online. For the remainder of the contract, we would, we would all allow $11 million.
How much here?
$11 million.
Great, thank you for that information. And so obviously, someone has to pay and that'll be us if this board decides to take action today and terminate. So, you know, I think, you know, there's other solutions that we can potentially explore. And that is the only question that I have right now. I would say, I have a motion to propose, but I will move it on while we wait for IMD to to make my motion because I think there is a solution to the problem. But it's the only question that I have right now. Go ahead, Lady.
Thank you, Madam President, fellow board members, executive team, those in the audience and those watching. I do have a follow-up question to that. I want a viable solution. A solution that's not gonna put us out $11 million, I don't know. And I'm gonna ask, so if it's a million, $11 million, so we vote to, you know, to break the contract, how much do we have to pay? We said $11. Where is that gonna come from and what is it gonna cost? Can you tell me what the implications are going to be to something like that?
Can you tell me what the implications are going to be to something like that?
Board President, members of the governing board, I'd like to answer that. I actually, when I asked about this a couple of weeks ago, the estimate was seven. I didn't know it was 11. Seven is still a lot. My recommendation to the administration is if we're going to, the way the contract reads is it's a year-to-year contract. And so my recommendation with however the governing board wants to, um, to create the motion and stipulations is that if the governing board wants to cancel the contract, that it would be in, at the end of the year, the June 2023. So we couldn't be out 11 million dollars. And then work towards the transition, making sure that our food service workers, you know, that we truly, you know, understand exactly, you know, what, what is needed to make sure that, um, everybody who wants to be part of the Carriage School District of Food Services can be part of the Food Services, you know, and we do it in-house. But, you know, obviously, transition takes time. And so I wouldn't recommend canceling it. We don't have 11 million dollars. I don't think anybody has 11 million dollars. But again, the contract is, you know, a yearly one. So if we were going to cancel it, you could cancel it today saying effective June, you know, 2020, June 30th, 2023, and we would not be out 11 million dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Lawler. Follow-up question, a little bit deeper into that is, you said to the end of the contract, which is in June, so we've got maybe six months, right? But if we terminate it now, it would cost us, we have to pay out, we're out 11 million. Where could we possibly get that? We can, but what will we, what, what are the implications? I don't know where. I'm just saying, what, what directly related funding source? Is that a line tool? And, and if we tap it into it from there, what, what are the implications? So I fully understand that.
Um, Board President, members of the governing board, I would have to, I'll, I'll answer just very little right now. I remember last year we had to eliminate 18 million dollars. And through that, it was, um, cutting staff, cutting programming. We were able to do it without, you know, cutting staff members. But I'm going to let Victoria kind of, I mean, we don't, we don't have the budget for 11 million. But if we had to cut it, then I'll let Victoria share what, what happened.
Good evening, Board President, members of the governing board, Dr. Aguilar Lawler, members of the executive team and everyone in attendance in person and online. That's a very difficult question to answer because the pressing, the biggest priority that school finance is facing right now is the aggregate expenditure level that has not been waived. And that affects our teacher pay. So we do have cash funds that we could possibly use, but that would be cutting. And I'm just talking, you know, thinking off the top of my head, that would have cut our, what is it? Employee childcare program, our, our daycare for our staff, for one, would go. We have some indirect costs, which are some of those funds that food services feed into, but we do pay staff out of that. And I would have to work with business services to find out exactly how many positions that would be that we would have to eliminate. And the, the, it's very difficult to answer that question because we're already 20 million dollars in the hole because, because of the aggregate expenditure level.
Thank you, Victoria. I have a quick question.
To bring that up that long until I get, what? The reason I'm asking for that is because I need to know if, if we, I don't, I don't want to be pushed into doing and undoing something that is going to have far greater implications than what, than what this contract costs. So in order for me to do, do my due diligence, I need to see, and I'm visual, guys, so in order for me to understand it, I need to see the break, I need to see that budget. And I need to see, uh, where we can, we can access that type of funding within our budget? Because it can be done. But I need to know more about those implications. What, what, where are we going to get it from and what is it going to hurt? What are we, where, I need those potentials. Without it, I can't make a decision. Because I be, I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to make a decision to, do I do make it and cause greater harm to our budget and our year? In reality, it's got to be a very logical approach. To me, I, I would recommend, I'm not making a motion, I'm just saying in discussion, that we look at those implications and, and find out where we can tap into those sources. I want to see it. If it's six months till the contract ends, are we in such dire straits that we need to undo this contract and things will automatically get better? I'm posing that question, maybe there's somebody who can answer that. And also, I tend to believe that, um, before this, even when we were doing it in-house, we've only, since I've been elected to this board in 2004, we've had issues with the cafeteria, with food service in terms of the hours. I'd like to see our staff with more hours. Instead of me losing 11 million dollars, guys, why don't we engage in a proactive conversation to discuss about how we can alter that pay to get, you know, more hours benefits at, at different levels? And saving this contract a year.
So should we cancel this contract? Where exactly are we going to get our food from? And how are we going to feed our students? Aside from the 11 million dollars that then would cause us to have to go back into, which I'm totally fine with doing it, where are we going to get the food?
Now, as members of the board, I just want to call this back to the, the fact that this contract is yearly. And if we are to tonight, if the board wants to tonight, cancel the contract at the end of the fiscal year, there's not going to be a monetary, we work through it and we transition. But to go back and do a whole study session on all this, it, it's, I hear what you're saying, that it's a, it's, it would cut a lot in our district. And I just don't know that our food service workers want to wait, um, all this time to get resolution. And so although, you know, I'm always willing to, to do that, our next governing board meeting is until December. If we're going to cancel the contract, we're going to need time to transition. Continue moving forward with what we're doing, but we need time to transition in order to ensure our scholars are still getting fed and food. So I, I just know that that's a lot of extra work when we know that we're not going to cancel. There's, I don't think there's one food service person in the room that wants to give up 11 million dollars to end this tomorrow, not to mention the fact that we wouldn't be able to feed the children next week. So I don't think anybody wants to do that. I think that we're trying to talk about, you know, what we brought to the table is what we think is doable. We just need to know if the governing board has questions about how moving forward might work. Because then we, we can ask some members of my team, maybe they'll answer those. So thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Lopez.
No, I don't have, thank you, Madam President.
Sorry, we're moving on to D2. Discussion is over. Moving on to D2, and now Mr. Lopez has something.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Aguilar Lawler, fellow board members, executive team and those in the audience. I know Board Member Lady Hernandez asked for some solutions. So given the, the comments and the facts and what's happening, I do have a motion and I think this will favor all of us here today. So I typed it down. I can obviously forward it to Christine and Linda. But it's here, you know, so we'll give it a shot. So my motion would be, I would like to make a motion to non-renew the SFP contract by June 30th, allowing the contract to fulfill its one year. This would end the third-party vendor. And, you know, this board will not hire any outside vendors. We will return to an in-house food service as it was in the past. We understand the food is what we like, so the food will stay. In addition to that, it seems like we need additional hours potentially for our workers. Instead of hiring outside two- to three-hour employees, so we would look at the possibility of adding additional employees. And I would redo it, Christine, I know it's a lot of comments. In addition to that, I would, I, I suggest that, you know, we do need a task force, a committee of district and cafeteria workers, CEA cafeteria workers, to be part of it so that we can start a process to return to an in-house by the next full year. So I would re, reread it so that I can. So here we go then. It is pretty long. Correct. Correct. That might be the answer. Correct. All right. So redoing the motion, I would like to make a motion to non-renew the SFP contract by June 30th. For now.
The board, let's open the jury up.
That is.
That would be discussed during the committee.
I'm sorry, I understand that there's an motion, Christine. We have an agreement. We have an agreement. Come on, come forward, Lopez.
They can't speak because it's not called public.
Come forward, please, come forward, come forward.
I'm sorry, what's going on? We're in recess.
Broke your trust. Come forward, come forward, come forward. To understand their agreement was that we had an agreement that SFP would go into the end of the year and that they would restrict out the managerial rights, because right now you have a private company managing public employees. That was our agreement we had. And that you'd be given additional hours. Now they've broken the trust. They broke the trust.
We're in recess.
They broke the trust. So come forward, we're going to come forward, we got to tell the story. Come forward, come forward, come forward. This is not what it looks like. We spent hours negotiating, you? Dr. Aguilar, partners, you all, you were told that the managerial rights, you all take hours, not for taking, we skipped out. The managerial rights were taken out and SFP will stay 100 years and will not be removed. And workers will give additional hours. Board Member Lopez, wasn't that the agreement? Wasn't that the agreement? I'm not allowed to speak because they said I could speak. I work for them. I work for them. Let it stress what they give us. Come forward, come forward.
Se ve, se siente, la unión está presente. 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 Se ve, se siente.
Estamos pidiendo ustedes que no estemos representadas por este P. Que ustedes estén presentados, representados ustedes mismos. Es lo que estamos pidiendo. Basta con ese P. Estamos pidiendo claro, entendemos que 11 millones es lo que le va a costar al distrito. Y les estamos pidiendo que nos den la oportunidad, que se, que terminen el contrato solamente de la comida. Pero el momento que ustedes están manejados de ese P, eso tendría que terminar ahora. Eso es lo que le estamos pidiendo. Eso es lo que estamos pidiendo.
Estamos muy cansadas todas. Estamos muy cansadas.
Queremos justicia, vamos, ahora. Queremos justicia, vamos, ahora. Queremos justicia, vamos, ahora.
Thank you. Until we have decorum in this boardroom, this meeting will not continue.
Decorum starts the trust, Madam President.
Decorum starts with not you in our boardroom.
Thank you, because we have.
You are correct. There are no deals. We want to resolve the issue, but this does not resolve the issue.
But you broke the trust.
I think you guys know.
No. Tell the different workers, the church, this meeting will not continue.
If we did get, if we did get food service workers, you guys know me? If you guys can have faith, we can help us, if you don't know.
We don't, she brought SFP.
No, you don't, because when have you spoken to me? Have you spoken to me? Who did you meet with? Not me. You did not speak to me.
We, we want to work out this, but I don't understand this.
Thank you.
This is your home, este es tu casa, this is your home.
Yes, it's your house.
Yes, we need to have conversations with them.
We're asking very peaceful.
I'm sorry, but you're meeting here in that order.
We're giving out the managerial rights.
How does this resolve the issue?
We have a private employee managing part right employees. Think about that, you have a private employer managing part right employees. On SFP's website, I went there myself, it says they do training, they do food, they do not manage employees. They don't even say it. This, this board, we found out of that. Board Member Lopez, he would speak up. He would tell you that he didn't know about the privatization. He didn't know about the privatization. But he stayed inside now.
Guys, listen. You've, you've got to sit down so we can continue the board meeting.
I'm sorry, Madam.
Why continue?
They, they.
Let them, let any one of them vote.
This is about fundamental respect.
Respect the board.
They're not respecting us.
Yes, they are.
I think, I think, I think.
They are respecting you. Sit down. They said they were going to stop the contract.
We want to resolve this. Did you make a motion? You have a free trial. We've been very curious. I'm going to be honest with you.
I'm sorry, what did I tell you about?
I don't know what this really was. I did not hear from many of the people. But this is about a lot of difference.
No, no, Bob, we're not here to argue. We're for it, verdad? No, we're not here. No, no, vamos a salir.
No, salimos.
We're here, we're in the world. Vamos a seguir.
Buenas tardes a todos.
I don't know what happened.
Sí, por favor, les doy las palabras, soy una tarde, soy madre de los niños que van a la escuela del distrito. Carriage. Y como padre, todos padres queremos mejor comida para nuestros niños, verdad? Ustedes comerían, ustedes hicieran tesuri. Hijos comieron la comida que tenían antes en las escuelas. Sí.
Right now, this is not about the food, this is about decision.
It started out, it started out as food, it started out as food. And as a parent, I want to apologize to all of you as workers that it had come to be to this point. But it really wasn't about you guys having to do the extra work and getting accidents and having low wages. It wasn't about that. It started out with a good intention. So please, can we, please finish this meeting for the goodness of our children? Because they're our children, but it's their future we're talking about. And with them not having good nutrition and not being able to negotiate, how are we going to negotiate if you guys are not willing to hear what the solution is? Can we please terminate this meeting at its right time? And I understand that you guys have rights, dos derechos y más las personas que han estado tanto tiempo con el distrito merecen los beneficios las horas. Claro que sí.
I just want to, I just want to just point the situation, because it's not true. We did not come here to have this. We came, we waited patiently, because everyone's beat. We waited, we got to the motion. The motion that was stated wasn't what we told was happening. These folks didn't come here just to hang out. They came here to do business. When you break that trust, it was your choice. This is caused by you.
And I understand that you guys have rights, todos tienen derechos, y más las personas que han estado tanto tiempo con el distrito merecen los beneficios, las horas. Claro que sí.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to point the situation, because it's not true. We did not come here to have this. We came, and we waited patiently, because everyone's feet, we waited, we got to the motion. The motion that was stated wasn't what we told was happening. These folks didn't come here just to hang out, they came here to do business. When you break that trust, it was your choice, this is caused by you. The moment you want to go back to the original motion that was promised to us, and I'll say it again, managerial rights stripped out, the contract ends at the end of June, which we agreed to, that's a concession right there, and workers will give you additional hours, three things, it's done. But you, we thought we had that deal, that's why they came out, they didn't come out just to be dismissed. You are disrespecting them.
You're making this of something completely opposite of what it really is. Why don't you allow this board to do their job and collaborate with? We have no trust with you, you don't need to worry about.
I'm sorry, do you mean I stay, do you mean I stay quiet for almost an hour?
Miss President, the disrespect would come, sir, you have not engaged us in a conversation proactively, I've never received the call, so what I can do, what I can address it publicly. So, Madam President.
Yes, I'm only here because this is.
May I address that concern with you? So I've been asked and told that it would, that I am the one to be communicating with others in the district, not that A, anybody from A, so Mr. Ramírez. I'm asking for anybody, it doesn't have to be him, but easier speaking and dressing the point. Okay, I've been asked, I've been asked, and, and.
We need to get our meeting back in order.
I've been asked not to speak to, to the.
We'd like to continue with the meeting.
As well as anybody else.
And we would like to address this, it comes to our resolution.
That's why.
Because we do care about our employees.
She would have to say.
[inaudible]
Muchas gracias a todos que vienen hoy a esta. En su parte de todos los que están trabajando en las brucheras de las escuelas. Como un padre, porque ustedes se han dedicado mucho tiempo y han hecho mucho esfuerzo muy grande para estar aquí y estar todos los días en las escuelas y viendo a nuestros hijos. Muchas gracias.
All right, everyone, we are going to resume our meeting. Let the record reflect, it is now 14:00 PM. Mr. Lopez, you're up the floor.
I think, Board Member Vázquez, you on the phone?
Yes, I am, I'm here.
Thank you. So, thank you, Madam President, Dr. Aguilera Lawler, fellow board members, executive team, those in the audience. Made a modification to the motion, so I would like to make a, a motion to non-renew the Southwest Food Service Excellent LOC contract, give a license award RFP number 21-2202, ending the current fiscal year contract in June 30th, 2023, with removing managerial rights effective immediately and creating a committee to address the problems.
I'd like to take that motion.
Mr. Vázquez, hold on, we are taking the motion, Christine.
What was the last time creating a committee?
Creating a committee to address all the work raises that we have immediately.
All right, everyone, so we do have a motion, and it's second on the floor. Motion made by Vice President Fender Lopez, second by Governing Board Member Annalena Batia. We're going to go ahead and do a roll call vote, just to keep this meeting moving. Ms. Lydia Hernandez, how do you vote?
I'm going to pass.
Are you abstaining or passing?
Passing.
We'll come back to you, okay. Governing Board Member Annalena Batia, how do you vote?
I vote A.
Thank you. Vice President Lopez, how do you vote? Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Governing Board Member Denise Priscilla, how do you vote?
I would I.
Thank you. Lydia, do you want me to go and then you vote? Or are you ready?
Go ahead, I've got, I'm going to explain.
Okay. I am going to vote I, not because of pressure, but because it is the right thing to do. And if truly that's what our cafeteria workers and employees and family members feel is best, then that's what we'll do. All of this wasn't necessary. I apologize that it has gotten to this point, we do care, and I look forward to seeing our cafeteria workers involved in the process. Thank you. Ms. Hernandez.
Madam President, fellow board members, those in the audience and those watching, I'm disappointed, I'm disappointed, because as, it's like, it doesn't matter what we say up here, as long as individuals here, individuals get their way. Now, I'm, I'm further disappointed in that Mr. Lopez all of a sudden pulls out a solution when we've been engaging in conversation. This is to me, it's very, it's political, it's a political game, and there's no room for it right now. If we so care about our food service workers, then we ought to address the issue at the time that we're voting on it. I ask my questions publicly. I furthermore, I, I'm always, I'm working, I'm doing something, I'm about to naff you, grant it, and I still wait the time to talk to, to HR, Dr. Medrano, to get my questions answered. When I came back, I still asked. No conversation, which means and tells me that they, based on whatever reasons that they, you know, they've made up in their own minds, and I'm saying that the, the board, they, they're voting that way. So I vote, well, this has been discussed somewhere, but not here. I've always invited our board members to engage in public discourse dialogue, so that we get to know each other and we know how we make our decisions. I can't guess. But if I ask my questions and nobody had any, any questions, and we make a decision, we're making bad decisions, we're not making informed decisions. From now to come forward, all of a sudden with the answer, to me, it, it makes us waste our money for, you know, for our kids, our workers, and I'm sorry that you guys felt that you guys had to come and do them, because all, when you come to me and ask your questions, I ask them, I incorporate them. And if we can't incorporate them, then by God, I want to know why. I want answers. I don't want to be up here wasting my time, I'm a, you know, I volunteer like everybody else. And this is valuable dollars that, that, that's a stake and that we've lost because we don't engage in public discourse. I understand, it's been shared with me, that everybody works differently, but we're elected to a public office. It's our job, fiduciary, it's called fiduciary responsibility, to advocate, to ask questions on anything that we may not understand, that we're not in agreement with, on behalf of our constituents. When that doesn't happen, then how dare you come back and say, well, no, the board did this? Wait a minute, you're a part of the board, I'll remind you. I'm a part of the minority for many years, but I still advocate and I still ask my questions. So, Madam President, I am, I'm going to vote in favor, but I'm doing so just explaining my role. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. And with that, the motion carries unanimously. Woo! [applause] Yeah. Thank you to all of our cafeteria workers for coming out this evening. We are now moving into our regular governing board meeting with executive session for the Cartwright Elementary School District Governing Board for November 17th, 2022. Let the record reflect, it is now 6:21 PM.